For around a few years. But um yeah, let's kick it off. So as always, we start with a comment. No one's signed up, but you're here to speak to us.
And I signed up. Oh, you're here, so you can speak. I signed up here.
Hello.
Hope I haven't got helmet hat there. I came in here with a helmet on. But anyways, I'm happy to be springing on a moped. Um Kelly Pusell was supposed to be here today to talk about advocating for the Healthy Relationship Skills course that you know you've been hearing about for how many years? And so actually, I've been doing a lot of homework again most last month. Remember, I gave you these bill numbers and they were not correct because every year they change the numbers. So I finally got ahold of somebody. So the new bill is A three oh eight seven. I've had many phone calls trying to get where that is happening. It's in the Education Committee. The Adabo office, who was the initial person who put it on the docket in two thousand seventeen. Uh was not able to get ahold of him. So then I went to Anna Callis. Anna Callis got me to Vivian Cook, who is a legislative person. I finally got to talk to her the other day. And she's now checking in with the Adabo office to see where we are with that mandate for social emotional learning. So I just wanted to give you the update on that. And to say that Kelly is sorry she's not here. She had some family issues, so she could not be here today. So do you have any other questions about where this is at or anything about it? Glad to. Here.
Make sure we get that uh bill note. I have to admit, I haven't looked at it. Last time we were traveling to Albany a lot, so it's good to have a new number.
Yes.
To come down.
It was hard for people to seem to find.
Any responses from our colleagues?
Uh no, thank you.
Alright, so we're moving on to approval of minutes from our last meeting. And uh standing before, so farewell.
It's been a while. I looked at those minutes. They were five minutes. I approved them.
We do a lot of this. I don't know what those other committees did, but.
I have a speech or college.
Well, thank you for that. So they're going to be approved. And next, we're moving on to our agenda. We have. Hold on, let me refresh my memory. I know we have at least two critical items that were determined to discuss today. Yeah, just the two, right? Literacy and the anti marginalization framework, for lack of a better word, right? Alright. Mary, take us away. Teach us everything we need to know in fifteen minutes about this.
I'm gonna take a deep breath for that one. Okay. So. I wanna begin by sharing that all of us can remember moments of when we learn to read. Like, I remember learning the word thought and then seeing it everywhere. And when learning another language, I remember learning a word and always thinking to myself, oh, I'm glad I learned that word, because a lot of people are using it. When really, they had always been using that word. I just wasn't hearing it. I didn't know it yet. And so. If you can think back to moments that you had as a reader. Those light bulbs, this is what we are trying to understand in the body of research right now. So. Who learns how to read and why and what are the components? And I'm just, I'm giving an example specific to reading. There's also literacy, so comprehension, oral language development, and then the reading and the writing component. So just to define these two terms, I want to start talking about reading, but then I'd like us to spin out and think about literacy as, as.
A full meal, if you will.
So if folks in the district say reading, they aren't necessarily talking about the comprehensive universe. Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah.
Right? But when they talk about literacy, they should be talking about everything, including reading.
Correct.
We're learning already. We got learning already.
Okay, so. Right now, in the field, educators and caregivers are really debating, discussing. How do kids learn to read? How do we know, hi Erin? They learn to read? And why, if we understand how kids learn to read, why, why haven't we been doing that? And that, you'll hear is the science of reading. And I have my own, um. My own personal thinking on that and how the field of education and research has been funded versus other sciences. And how opening up, you know, caregivers watching their children learn how to read online. Really elevated the conversation quickly. Wait a second, how come, you know, I learned to sound out a word? How come my kid is looking at a picture and being asked to, to guess what they think it is? So that is the, the podcast that lots, uh you, you might have heard reference to called Sold a Story. It, folks are listening to that and it documents the history of reading in the United States and how it's been taught in our schools. So. So essentially, I have some handouts and I'm gonna hand these to, uh we can, but then. We got you. Okay, listen, okay, you talk, we got you. Alright. Because I feel like we need some of the materials for you to build the context. Yeah.
Apologies, we'll have those up a little bit.
Alright.
Mary, we're supposed to have different things. We all.
Yeah.
You're.
Probably go a little bit of a thump. Okay. So you can tell I haven't been in the classroom in ten years, because I totally just did the teacher call where you hand things out and then you talk to kids as they're like sharing their handouts. I know, it has been.
Wow.
I know officially.
And what a great.
I loved it. I actually love it. Uh so what you'll see in front of you, those bound texts, if you open that up, that's an example of a decodable text. So when we're talking about reading. Children, you have three different levels, kindergarten first to second grade. This is an example of how a child might learn a rule about how letters interface with one another. And they're taught it, and then those passages only have those letter combinations. So a child can go through and practice. So when you look at that, what do you, is there anything you notice? Jumps out at you. So where in here? Any, any page, any one of the passages.
Oh, you mean these?
Yeah, yeah.
The thing I noticed, that I was happy to notice, because it wasn't the first two pages, but I guess that's because the first couple pages are kids towards adults. Lovely pictures.
Okay, so, so Eldridge pointed out a picture. So can you show folks the picture?
That's lovely pictures. Chip and TikTok on this picture.
TikTok. Mine has no pictures.
And yours doesn't.
Yeah, but yours is different. Mine is different.
So Erin, you have, you have Countdown, which is kindergarten.
Ah.
Why they call Countdown kindergarten, I do not know, but they do. And they named first grade Blast.
Wow.
And second grade is HD Word.
That's just not catchy.
Correct. They're probably gonna hire you to be their marketing consultant. That's a point. So what you'll notice, Eldridge said, okay, there are pictures. So. When you hear the term queuing system, that was a way of teaching children that they would look at the picture and it would cue them to make meaning. And these texts intentionally do not have a lot of pictures. Because they want children looking at how the letters are interfacing with each other and practicing the rule that was taught. So they look decidedly different than something like um a Dick and Jane text.
So you have lots of pictures, I remember. Eight thousand years ago, I remember there was lots of pictures, and that'd be one of those pictures.
Dick and Jane's.
Alright, so in the last six minutes, so those are some examples of decodable passages. They're not the whole story, because the intent is for a child to learn the rule and gain confidence by practicing that, the page. And not being able to memorize it so that you can, you can actually assess what they've learned versus what they've memorized and how they've learned to apply the rule. Are we ready for the next handout? The next thing on your table?
I'm reading the passage on fudge.
Now, I will tell you. Um, I don't recall the passage on fudge.
Man made a batch of fudge in the big Dutch pot. I see what they're getting at.
Yes.
But it's um.
It's a lot there, a lot there.
It's a.
Same.
As a work of literature, I'm not a fan.
It can, how, I'm sorry, I mean, uh.
Yeah.
So, so get, well, if I can't see it.
Yeah.
So what do you, what do you?
I, I mean.
What are you seeing by reading it?
What am I seeing by reading it? Is they're, they're going through the same letter combinations and sounds over and over and over again, and I think something is lost in the story as someone who was raised on stories.
So that's a great segue, because this is, yes. So we're gonna, we're gonna build a sandwich. We're gonna have coding as one piece of bread. And that's the decodable text. We're gonna have the meat, which is oracy. So that art of storytelling and language development and being able to hear things and attach meanings to them after you've learned it in the written word or not, through experience. And then comprehension. So how do we take these symbols off the page, attach them to our experience in the storytelling, and then make meaning out of them? That would be the final piece of bread. So when we're thinking about a literacy block, this coding portion is fifteen minutes. Really great reading is intended as a high-paced fifteen-minute access to, to that coding piece. And then what other ways in your classroom are you building language development and comprehension? So through Dr. Holly's culturally responsive text sets, we might read a book and have questions that are gonna allow children to turn and talk to each other about what they heard in the story or how that relates to them, their own life. And so. This um text. So. Balanced literary literacy is this idea of the teacher having a combination of having read alouds and kids read to self or literacy instruction. And so shifting from that approach, and that included the queuing system and looking at pictures and guess what it means? To more of the science of reading, which includes the coding lesson. And then the language development, you know, reading a story to students, talking about it like a Socratic seminar type method. And so this is the text that we are going to be using next year to support educators, our elementary educators, and specifically looking at classroom practices for the other components. So the last two years, we've really focused on really great reading. We need to now add on to that sandwich oracy and do that for a couple of years, and then add on comprehension. It's not saying that they're not already thinking about that and doing it, but we wanna really build, you know, build the foundation and just add on to it with sustained professional development for educators.
A quick question before we move on. So we've gone.
You are not capable of a quick question.
I don't think it's alright. So alright, here we go. Alright, so we've been in enough classes now, leading instructor rounds to see what elementary teachers are doing. We've seen babies in the five different places. That's not gonna change. As we layer this on, is it?
No, no, I think it's going to be, we're gonna be really intentional when we're thinking, we don't wanna focus to what Pat said so much on this decodable passage. That's what you do for the whole hour. And that joy of reading a whole story and making meaning and talking about it with friends is, is not a shared experience in our classrooms. I just can't help think, and when I listened to Sold a Story, I kind of thought the same thing. And this is a two-pronged question, because I always seem to do that to y'all. One, you know, research is always changing, and so how are we sure we're gonna change with it and, and, you know, make sure it's right? And then the other question is, you know, we keep learning more about neurodivergent minds, and we still don't know everything we should. And so when we're looking at how we're teaching reading, how do we take into account? I mean, it's not just different learning styles, like it's, you know, it's, it's so much more than that. So what are we doing to account for that with our students? So absolutely, what we know now is gonna change, okay? And so it requires. It requires a lot of attention and care and support of educators. They, building the relationship with students to know what books they're interested in or what might capture their attention, that's important. We don't, we don't wanna lose that joy of reading, even though we know now, no, we haven't had a system for teaching decoding that was shared by all eight elementary schools. Actually, all of our schools. So we can do that and still stay curious, because, you know, we don't wanna get sold a story again. Let's question what we're doing and, and how we're seeing children thrive or not, flourish or not with, with what we're doing. And then to speak to supporting neurodivergent learners, one of the things, one of the components that I think is really important and really great reading are some of the manipulatives that they use and the ways in which you can do independent work through online games. You can take your board, you'll see on your first page, these letters and tiles that are added and go to a quieter space. You can work with a partner. That's like a three concrete strategies specifically you, that are highlighted when using really great reading. You'll see as well, um, one of the handouts is an example of a letter that the caregivers that has the hyperlinks that educators can send home. So again, we're building that, that partnership with families. But your point, to your point, absolutely, some students, you know, when I, when I got to be a classroom teacher, some students really would thrive with Socratic seminars. And that would be what we would use as a pre-writing exercise. Was because it helped them build their understanding before trying to, to write about it. And so I think that, I love that you asked that question. So we have to keep surfacing that question as we're adopting other layers onto this. I think something else that I would just um add on to. You know, I was in college twenty years ago and uh. The research was, they continued to do research on um the way brains learn to decode text. And. Much of it has remained the same. So even in Sold a Story, you know, they talk about this history, right, where it's like, yeah, phonics, right, that teaching phonics is one, is, is a component. On the National Reading Panel, I remember, um, you know, when I was at SU, published the um, you know, their review on what what all of the research says is required in order to actually learn how to, how to read, right? And the science of reading was there, right? Was it called the Science of Reading? Right? Um, but um, and I was, I was a lucky one, right? Because my, my professor, one of my professors at Syracuse was Benita Blackman. Wrote, wrote, wrote to the code, which was, which is a program that teaches first phonemic awareness, so that's the ability to manipulate and segment spoken phonemes. Um, and to, and to attach um to the thing, right, to those phonemes. So it's clap syllables, we tap sounds, we move shapes onto a line as we say that, right? And then it transitions into phonics. So, and that was super rare, right, to have a professor knew that part, right, and taught us that part. Because most of my other colleagues learned a way of teaching us the three queuing system, right? It's like, check the picture, does it make sense? And then after all that fails, then you can take one. And so, you know, I know I'm not that old, but like twenty years of like people saying like, okay, it's the same thing, since I've just been in the game. Um, is a, is a level of, I think. You know, it's pretty helpful information.
But do you find, sorry, follow up?
No, it's good.
Do you find that people are researching the right things? I mean, a lot of the work I do, you're, the right questions aren't being asked.
Right, they're like, they're researching my brain.
Right.
Right? Um. I have a feel, like Mary's saying, like, we have to be open. We have to be open to more. You know, and what I've, what I've read since graduating, um, in my masters is in inclusive special education with a concentration in teaching children the thought system. Um, so there was a level of, like, you know, really paying attention to current research then around um neurodivergent, neurodivergent learners. And. You know, there, they are researching different brains and different ways kids learn how to read. And one of the ways that they discovered that the three queuing system doesn't work is they researched kids' brains who were struggling readers and continue to struggle and struggle and struggle and struggle, and that's what they were doing. But I also think people change to keep, yeah, yeah. And we've used science for a really long time to do tricky stuff as humans. And so we have to be aware of that. And if it's not including everybody, we gotta know, and we've gotta pay attention to that and shift.
So when we did our, our instructional rounds for the literacy um uh component in elementary schools last, last year. And we, we were seeing the first, last year, like.
Years ago, that.
It was either last fall or the previous spring. I can't remember, semesters blend together, but, but we went into several classrooms and they were working very strongly on phonics. And those, those looked to be very productive classroom situations in which the kids I was seeing from being in the back were, were engaged and and participatory and getting something out of the lesson. And the phonics is one of the three components of this brand scheme that you've got here.
Yes, and they were, you saw classrooms using really great reading.
Really great reading, yes.
And there is a learning curve with the pacing. Because again, the pacing, it should be fifteen minutes whole class instruction, so you can get to the other components of literacy, that oracy and comprehension.
So phonics would technically fall under the first element, which is coding?
Yeah.
And fluency vocabulary are under oracy? Am I getting ahead of myself?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's hard, because I, I see them. In.
As a flow.
Yeah, uh, yeah, as a flow.
I, I, do we just say this and the interest of opinion on this? So without knowing any of the signs, the first time, getting into this level of uh of uh, of your profession. I've been working with kids for thirty years in this town to try and get them caught up. And universally, I'll fail, even when the teachers have been inviting me in their class and work with those three or four words, don't get it. Now, I think what I would say, hearing these words is, they can't code. Coding is gone. They tell me that the comic books I share with them, they see nothing in those clouds, right, the talking clouds. Can't read it. I guess they're not willing to share with the class what they do know, so maybe that's oracy. But reading comprehension, I've always done this, say. Write down or tell me everything you see in these picture boxes. Right? And I have to tell you, I'm getting goosebumps thinking about it. Universal, these kids come up with seventy or eighty things they see. And the other kids who are doing it the normal way, they come up with fifteen things. I just found that extraordinary. These kids will tell me the color of the sky, they'll tell me that they see three wheels or wonder where the fourth one is. They see the Hulk has five fingers and a fist on one hand, and they just, they can, their comprehension level is spectacularly advanced. But they're missing the other. They don't got the other stuff. Is that a function of? It's a question, that function of brain function, is that a function of, of this tripe thing we've been saying for thirty years, exposure to words, right, at a certain level? Or is it a function of mom and dad reading?
So I. I think it's complex, and I don't wanna oversimplify it. But I, as last night, as we, we got to be at this talk about um unconditional appreciation for children. And so as an educator, and I do not feel I stand alone in this, if I would see a child struggling, that would be a product of something that I had not provided space and exposure to, because we have the right kids. So when something like that is happening, and I see a boy, I don't wanna look to, to blame caregivers that we wanna partner with or that somehow the child's deficient in any way. But there's an unmet need there in our instructional practice. So this summer, when we had a group of high school students who some of whom we had never given direct decoding instruction to. They attended the training with teachers and they went to support students at Beverly G Martin in our summer programming as reading buddies. One of the children um looked at me and said, this is a sixteen-year-old child in our district, said, Ms. Grover, I am not broken. I just learned to read differently. The queuing system was not working. And so that's what I would say, I wonder, in spending time with those children, if they had time with the letter tiles in the decoding, it might be that. They might need more language development, and by that, I mean time talking to each other. In COVID, COVID has been incredibly challenging for children. You, you know, it's, it's, um, today in a school, I watched a child who, who I went, went to put earphones on and she was like, I don't want those on me, you know, like really having a reaction to having to have worn them for two years. I think we're just at the cusp of understanding uh some of the impacts of that sustained time for kids. And so.
So they're not sequential, they're just.
They're not sequential. Thank you.
Three things at post.
Now.
That our babies need to get eventually.
I'll be darned, you're being concise and I'm not. Yes, they're not sequential.
I'll also say, just, you know. Looking at. Looking at our data, you know, we, you know, it's tricky, right? It's a. I understand the tension and I feel the tension. It's important for us to keep ourselves accountable, especially when it comes to race and class and ability to ability.
It's important for us to keep ourselves accountable, especially when it comes to race and class and ability, disability. Right? So we need to look at our data and our kid level data, right? And I also know who designed the assessment, right? They mostly look like women, white women in their 40s could bring lots of biases to each of these assessments. So I feel that tension, right? But as we, as we more systematically look at some of our data as we continue for here, I am feeling hopeful with some initial, um, smaller gains that we've seen. So one of our schools where, um, you know, I would say, most folks would say, um, you know, our test scores haven't been super awesome, they have, right? Got the right kids, our test scores haven't been super awesome, talked to the second grade team. Wow, kids have really great reading. They're still doing all the awesome case study work, anti-maritalization case study work, fabulousness, right? There's, the kids had 15 minutes a day of phonics instruction in first grade, now they're in second grade. Just about. So some of our initial, and that's not true everywhere, I'm not gonna say like, oh, this is Julie fixing everything. I'm just saying that, um, that access to that specific way of learning to read was something that for many of us, not for our own fault, but when we went to school, most of us did not learn how to teach phonics. We learned whole language and the three cueing system.
Judy Maxer, Judy Maxer, a long time board member, many of us know. When I first joined the board, 2009, I remember her giving me this article, sliding this article across the table about BGM learners and phonics from 1969, I believe it was. So, we've been at something for a very long time. So can we put a pin in this? Because we really got to talk about this other thing, which is equally important. But can we get a commitment that we'll come back to this? After you let us have a chance to absorb all this stuff that, the materials that you've given us?
Yeah, are these going to be helpful? First, I just have one year for your session if you want these back.
Well, we see each other, so we can, we can exchange them, right, Erin?
Yeah.
She's got.
Is that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
She's got.
Those are, those are all available online. Um, teachers have access to them, we just downloaded them and sent them to OSCE's to be bound, so they had easy access.
Okay.
The teachers sitting here.
So we'll, we'll shift amongst ourselves.
Be highly critical of this.
At different meetings. So again, that's, you got it, right? This is first and that's second.
Yes, okay, yeah.
Yes, the dull one is second.
The dull one is second, babe.
Decodable passages.
Can they stop it? Learning to play in the first year, get those play things.
So, I'll, I'll just throw under that, that I can read my kindergarten grandson, well, since he was an infant. But this, this year, since he's in kindergarten, we're doing extra work on phonics. Apparently, the little golden books I was raised on are not no longer acceptable for the modern age.
I've crossed out so many words in your books that my mom gave me.
Some, some of those things are retrograde.
I just, I just hid a couple of books.
All right, so the next, the next thing on our agenda, let me just give you guys some context. Uh, I have been in communication with one, two, three, four, five, at least six educators in the district in the last three or four months. White, black, and in between. And they have felt that they were, that their hands were smacked when they made a mistake. Spake was around some aspect of doing what we've asked them to do. Just getting there, have difficult conversations about race, about class, about some other difficult issues. And, uh, some have been asked to take a temporary leave, I think it is. Right? Others have said, well, if this is the way they're gonna treat my colleague, how can they possibly expect me to be brave? Right? So I'm seeing what's happening. So that led me to think that we want to have a discussion here about the materials, the science, the actual way we sort of steer our teachers through that difficult canyon. So you can come out on the other side more confident, too brave enough to feel that if they make a mistake, that's not gonna happen tonight. And ultimately, we'll want them to have the game pass and do this fluently and, and, uh, and, and learn from the kiddos along the way. So that's what prompted me to ask that question. Uh, because of both black teachers and white teachers saying, you know, you can't have it both ways, can't ask me to do this and if I get it wrong, you smack me down. So, that's where we're at. Now I'm looking forward to hearing about how we do help them facilitate these conversations. Who's leading us?
Um, I mean, we are, I'll, I'll probably start in, if that's okay. Um, really, Mary is the, uh, genius alumni of the assistant husbandry of the anti-maritalization curriculum work. And we all should and have to be in, be able to speak fluidly about what's happening in relationship to. In full disclosure, we, um, have to be smart about what we're separating to prepare. So, I was gonna start, I was gonna start out. And then Mary, Mary would jump in. Um, so first, I want to acknowledge the, the, the challenge that you've brought up, because that's real. Uh, and you know, like for people who are watching the month, people who are in the space now, um, there's, as we try to change the way and the what of, of our teaching, from what was like, oh, right? Um, it's different and we're gonna make mistakes. As someone who in 2008, nine, was teaching first graders about Dr. King's giant triplet of racist and militarism. Materialism, um, I was gonna say extreme material, but, um, the, there were, I'm gonna be honest, there were some things I did not do completely properly, right? Um, and in part because, and also, it was really important to do. Right? It was still a really important unit to do and I had some support, um, from colleagues in the district at the time. And, uh, including Dr. Eversley Bradwell, Barry Dierfalle, and some other folks, um, in order to refine those lessons. David Billings, who's part of the, uh, those who do for survival beyond, definitely entered, or, and new racism. So I, I just think it's important to acknowledge that and like, you know, as I, as I go back in time and remember the lessons that I did, I remember that well. All right. Now I think we have a better system designed to work through some of that, right? Which is part of why we're trying to figure out a way to really invite everybody in to the anti-maritalization curriculum institute writing process. Because it's not just like, sit down and write a unit. There is a lot of identity work done. And there is a lot of work around how on earth do we facilitate learning around race, around power, around privilege? Um, and it's gotta, like, we continually have to come back to like who we are and how we show up in the space and knowing what like our impact is. Um, you know, as a, as a white woman talking about this very topic right now, I am aware of that, you know, of my cisness, of my whiteness, of my, you know, all my makeup, right? Like, I have to just know if there's like an impact or not in the space, right? Um, and so there's four days of that work that people are doing, interspersed with understanding the sociopolitical context and the history of education. That, so there's learning and there's collaboration, there's trust building, there's norms, et cetera, right? And so part of the power of that institute is to give people some, frankly, like, safe practice and affinity group practice in order to engage in some of that stuff where we're not harming each other in, in those kinds of spaces. Um, so that, I think, is a, is a much better system to address a lot of it. Now, what I have here and what's attached in the agenda are some of the resources specifically that we use in relationship to that training. That people walk away with and utilize. And actually, the, the Columbia one, the one that, um, it's the smaller version, it's like the eight and a half by 11. Yeah, so, uh, no, let's talk, it's from, oh, Columbia's the, the black, yes, or this.
We just have the extra one.
Oh, okay. Uh, I actually referenced that when I was like going into a, um, a conversation. And I actually went to the very back and looked on page six and I went through the example of how a conversation could go in a way that's more productive, that validates and affirms, and then builds the bridges. So this was a, a really helpful resource, um, that actually Equity Consulting Group shared with our, uh, team of teacher leaders who helped facilitate the anti-maritalization curriculum writing institute on the 17th of March. Um, so real time, very recently utilizing this. Utilizing this, this kind of work, so, um, this is more specific to like facilitating conversations with adults, which is helpful. And this larger one, Teaching Tolerance Guide, which is now Learning for Justice, is very specific to facilitating conversations with kids. So, um, I'm thinking back to, oh my gosh, let me try to come back in school, 2020. Um, I think even before that, we had started sharing this with educators pretty widely. Um, and I think coming back and revisiting it often, it's really helpful. But it's a helpful resource because it's almost like step by step guide, a guide, right? Clarify terms, consider your own identity, evaluate your comfort level with different topics, right? Um, figure out what's holding you back. Step, step by step. Um, and then it's with your kids, right? So you do some pre-work and then it's with your kids, right? So, um, what are your classroom agreements, right? Honoring student experience, um, prioritizing social emotional skills and safety. And then we're talking about facilitating critical moments.
Oh, I forgot. 15 years ago now? I think it's literally 15 years ago. A middle school teacher in a middle school that will not be named, much less a teacher's name, introduced to kids a book that's well-known or comes to really free. That book, bring it now, we still using such a thing? Like a Huckleberry Finn type book. Had the N-word nine times for the first 15 pages. Kids lost.
Yeah.
And there was a whole conversation in community about banning the book. And our, you know, me, Sean, other people, this year, we'll go for the right passage. Because we don't, nobody's interested in banning the book. But how do we ensure that the teachers understand that they should set a path for that? And that be, they'd be diligent, right? And set that path for kids with fidelity. So when they have this conversation and they read the N-word, they don't lose it. Use that either to, uh, attack or make fun of or support each other in the ways that, you know, middle schoolers do, so. That's really all I, I see that already, right? Just pointed that out with teacher talents, but I'm back to the fidelity, I'm back to, this is one of the few times I wanted to sit here and say, I want something mandated. Right? I want a, a, a decision tree that if teachers do not execute, it leads them to you. Right? Or leads them to step building, or leads them to somebody. They'll do it over and over and over again, it leads them to pop up, right? And, uh, and I know the strategy here has been to grow, to build relationships with, to encourage, to support, have people bring themselves on board, come to us, work through their identity issues. I'm just gonna say, I don't feel this is an issue, I don't feel this is an area where I want all that. Right? Because we can get there by just saying, look, here's, here's 12 things you need to do. Give them a, give them a map. Here's, here's how you have to go, go however you want. I'm not even interested in saying what the first, what the, the order of the steps, I don't care about that. These are the things you need to think through, whether white, black, issues, class, or gender, or ability. Go through this process. And they were gonna be pretty sure that you have tried your best. It will always be iterative, continue to get better. I don't know who the people would be who would say what this path should be. But, uh, you know, I, I, this is a, this is an area I want something more of it to make. And I don't know how we get there.
While we're on this topic, um, and I plan to read through this really carefully. Um, and Lily, much like you said, like, it feels weird me saying this. Uh, um, I, I'm around a lot of kids. And I have had, um, a white, a young white student say to me that, you know, they feel bad about themselves because they're a white boy. And how, you know, so many white men are bad and I didn't quite know how to relate this in one of our meetings. Um, and I was like, well, maybe the student is like very few. And as I've kind of like talked to people I know and shared this, they, I've met a few people who've said they've heard the same conversation in students as well. And I don't think these students probably don't feel comfortable bringing this up in school. And I, you know, I, I know our teachers are doing a great job. And I think, I, and I wonder, as we recognize all these things, how do we make sure that these kids that just don't have maturity in their brains? Who are white boys, who, there's a lot of anger towards white men now? How do we protect them and make them feel good about themselves? Are we going out of our way to be intentional? We talk so much about white privilege. What about these kids who like, they take that on, on themselves? Have we heard any of this? Are we exploring that as well? How are we sensitive to them when we're teaching this? And I, I don't know. Is, is that anything explored in anything we've been reviewing yet?
Yeah, I can tell you a little bit of a conversation, actually, that, um, that I was privy to, that, uh, no, I think, um, that a white teacher was having with a, a group of white students. Um, and they were unpacking of a mistake that, uh, these, these young people had, had just made. That was a, that was a racialized mistake, right? Um, and the teacher very skillfully conveyed a message of deep love and respect to the young people, like literally saying, you're such an amazing kid, you do this, you do that, oh my goodness, you are just this amazing unit. And here was that impact. How do you, how do you thank so much people about, oh my gosh, oh, whoa, whoa, right? And the, and the walk away was, it sounded like light bulbs go off, like, I can do better. Okay, okay, I'm part of this thing. Ah, got it, okay, and I, my teacher still loves me, cares about me, cares about me enough to tell the truth to me. Um, and did it in a way that showed just the utmost regard.
Um, and did it in a way that showed just the utmost regard, right? I don't know if that's exactly what you're getting at, but I, um, but I want folks to know that there are, there are ways to engage in this work that allow space for everybody. And as someone who's who's had the opportunity because of where I grew up and who my teachers were and then, you know, the professional development that I was able to access very early on when I became a teacher here. Um. You know, I I could, honestly, I could have very easily felt bad about myself and my and my weight. I remember unpacking, you know, invisible knapsack, Peggy Mack and Tasha's work when I was in seventh grade. And I could have felt bad about what advantages I have had because of the structures of our worlds. And I've seen it done over and over, not only to me, but also with other educators, that it doesn't have to result in folks feeling bad about themselves. Now, the specific nuances, I would love to like unpack a little bit more. You know, one of my own experiences that I've had to reckon with, and I'm not saying this is the case, but it's just something that I've had to reckon with, is like, um, you know, it's a sort of an old adage at this time, right? It's like, um, for some of us who are accustom- accustomed to privilege, equity can feel like oppression, right? Too, so even like bringing in other folks' perspectives or experience into the story, sometimes I've gotta like check that, oh, my gosh, right? Need to unpack some of that, or feeling like there's not room, or we're, um, or we're not, we're not talking about the the heroes and the all of the wonderful folks who worked together or continue to work together for racial justice. There are white, David Billings, right, I've talked about a couple of times, right? He was, he's a white man, cisgender man, who led undoing racism workshops for decades, right? Um, and he's a, you know, so highlighting some of those examples, I think, also more so helps us get away from some of that here.
Yes, I, so I have a strategy. When I work with any other people, regardless of the topic, I'm trying to introduce a range of excellence, right? Because it exists, we're talking about dance, St. Williams, well, it's African-American. It's Fred Astaire, Ginger Roberts, middle upper middle-class white. And it said, I always forget his name, it said, country comfort, one consistently for having the fastest feet in the world. And all he did is dance on tables in Appalachia. Right? Guy was incredible. I think it's important to allow babies to see themselves across the board before you even start introducing these concepts about about who's on top, right? Can we at least let them see what the possibilities are? And you want to talk about who live where and restricted covenants, you can get into all that. But that's a, that's a, again, as I said last night, I'm a boy, you're a girl. I have a lot of things I like with kids, but I have no idea which ones are research, which ones are top of mind now, which ones are part of the, are of these standards. But what I do know is I don't want to have conversations with adults anymore saying, I tried, I tried to do what they asked me, and I obviously somehow screwed it up. Instead of somebody taking me into confidence and working with me, I got my hands smacked. You know, when it comes to safety babies, we know that's our number one priority, but I don't know, I don't know what I'm saying, something's up.
No, I mean, in regards to teachers, I've had similar conversations, right? I know exactly what you're talking, I don't know exactly what you're talking about, but I I I've heard similar. And yeah, I'm there's, I mean, there's so much work to be done, right? I feel like what we're implementing here is just like so new in the span of our history that it's kind of learn as we go, no? Like, in some ways?
I don't know if it's new, Erin, so.
It's not new, but I mean, any schools doing it? How how how, I mean, how many, how many schools in the nation are doing it? And look how many states are trying to stop it.
Trying to stop it, but last night we were at this great presentation about trauma in kids. I said, Michelle, a gang member, leading the conversation fifty years ago, nineteen seventy-two, saying, it's the education system that's our worst enemy. Right? Gang leader, got it. Right? And the video goes on to talk about the the principal, rather than he's actually a member of the community, lives there. Teacher saying, I need to get outside this building, work with the kids. These are not new conversations. Let's just put that out there. Conversation actually started when African-Americans were removed from the head of the classroom. Some almost wars we had in public education systems between unions and black women, right? And suddenly we had a whole swath of middle-class white women being gay people again in the social services, in teaching, in nursing. So this is not a new conversation. I'm glad it's still happening, right? Because it's that important, let's not confuse novelty with newness.
Implementation, and that's what I'm referring to. Implementation in an entire school district. Do we know how many nations in the country are doing somewhat, or how many nations who need sleep? Do we, I mean, do we know how many schools in the country still ships are pulling this out?
Theory, teachers education, I'm putting them on the spot.
Many more than we think. Many more than we think.
Many more, I, okay, I, so to help my brain grasp it, do we know like percentage-wise?
There are seven hundred school districts in New York State, there are four thousand colleges, universities across the country. Uh, you start multiplying that out, we're talking about probably about a thousand schools who are trying to do this kind of work.
I'm sorry, I'm referring specifically to public schools. I don't count higher education, it's a whole different realm.
I'm just giving the scale of scope of the kinds of education that we have that are out there that are engaged in this sort of work. So are we on the front end of it? Absolutely. Is it new? Absolutely not. Folks were having this conversation in eighteen seventy. It was part of Reconstruction. This is not, we're not doing anything new. Justice and protecting all babies is not a new concept. How we do that, how we build out, how we scale out, how we resource, uh, those are conversations to be had. But it's not like folks haven't done it before and hasn't been successful. And some of the most successful models were intentionally shut down because they weren't successful.
Right, and it seems like we've as a collective, we've come to the point where we don't want bullying anymore, right? To such an extent, now we have a state program called BASSA, has, you know, has milestones. People have to have to check in about these things. We know about if if a child accuses another child, we mandated reporters, right? So we've gone through that, confidential world takes over. Adults oftentimes don't even know because it's deemed out of order, right? Race, sixty-year-old subject, we are still talking about what it would be nice to do. That personally infuriates me. Nobody in this room's fault, but but it infuriates me.
Eldred, if you could have, person plural, have your choice on how to implement this, based on your knowledge as a person, your knowledge in the schools for, in this community for thirty years. If you could wave a wand tomorrow and change something, I'm not talking about mindset, because we all know that that is the biggest hurdle, right?
Right, right.
But if you could wave a wave a wand tomorrow to make this change for the better within our school district, what would you do?
I said it, create a thought map, a decision tree. So all of our administrators and and teachers, no, you pick the topics, nobody's gonna tell you what to do. Should you want to implement a unit about indigenous people? Should you want to implement a unit about this issue going on right now about sexual gender identity in sports? If you want to take, if you want to implement something that could bring you close to a third rail, these are the things we want you to think about. These are the things we would like you to try, give it some background. Invite the parents in, like, have those conversations, check with your leaders. Build a nice, a support structure on the outside and give you some guidance. And then, I I think you will accept the outcome, right? Because that's never going to be perfect.
With the magic wand, I would want folks to recognize, if we take a look at the life of a true human who just recently passed away as one of the largest disability advocates that our country's ever seen, that it has always been an intersectional approach. It's never been just about race, it's been about disability, about gender, about gender expression, gender identity, race. And even when you look at the most successful movements, they weren't doing it in silos. So while we may talk about anti-marginalization and anti-racism, let's be real, we're talking about humanizing babies. That's what we're talking about. How do we find a way to humanize all young folks? It's not siloed, they're interconnected. And we have too many models to be able to teach us that lesson, and I hope we follow through.
Yeah, that's well said. I mean, I remember, uh, last thing I'm gonna say, because we've got to move on to get into the next. Dr. Brown bought a little brown baby up to the stage, Sean, remember this, maybe six, seven years ago? Kid was so adorable, I wanted to turn him upside down and sweep it for him. He was fat, he was hair was like, wah! He couldn't communicate. He was noncommunicative. And his elementary teacher at the time had, uh, created a space in the classroom area where everyone had a device that he was using. And in doing that, she created an entire room full of babies who were suddenly bi-labeled.
No, but he could communicate, just not in traditional means.
Exactly, well, point taken.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he was, well, I said non, the phrase then was noncommunicative, right? Right? And I've seen other schools where a dance person comes into the classroom some random time, but every classroom, every day, the kids begin to do the dance, and she's worked with them on, right, really just sleep. And the kids who could communicate differently always lead in those classrooms. Right? This is a paid position to allow children to expand their horizons and their capacity to engage. So to Sean's point, I'm well past this idea that this is just about race. But I think we owe it to our teachers to give them a guide that's a little stronger than some well-thought-out, beautiful recommendation. That would require probably union engagement, right? But somewhat, this is, we've 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 set standards that have gone statewide and national so many times. So not gonna put you two on the spot and say, what do you think? But I'm just sharing my thoughts, somebody's been feeding this during work for a while now. So here's something else, we need to do these dot, these materials, so we could circle back to this and have the next round of this conversation.
And I want you to sketch, can you sketch a diagram?
Absolutely, absolutely. I've talked about this all the time.
Alright.
It's gonna look like a cake, but these are Sean's to pray.
We should do it as a board, with the lost sounds.
Yes, that'd be fantastic. All right, so we're gonna bring this meeting to a close with ten minutes later. Thank you so indulgent, Mary, thank you for indulging, Lily, you guys are wonderful.